The scheduled November council meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming out. Welcome all our visitors and citizens. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll start with our prayer, followed by a pledge. If Councilman Woods, if you don't mind, you leave us in.
Prayer.
Ms. Bowles, our Father, our God, we thank you, pray again tonight for all of your many blessings. You allowed us again on another second Monday night to come together. God, we just ask tonight that you would give us wisdom, that you give us insight and foresight, that we'll be about city and government business. God, again, we don't want to forget about those that are sick. We don't want to forget about those that are masters that's less fortunate. God, we just lift them all to you right now. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the flag, will you? I praise the Wizards to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What'd you call the role, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Gill.
Here.
Ms. Wowe.
Here.
Mr. McKinnon.
Here.
You guys here. And Steve. Mr. Wood.
All right, first, we have approval of October 18th, regular scheduled council meeting minutes. You have those. If there's no changes or corrections, is there a motion for us to approve those minutes? Have a motion with, who was that? Mr. Crawford. Motion by Mr. Crawford. Second by Mr. McKinnon. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. First, under my report, uh, city offices will be closed Thursday in honor of Veterans Day. I encourage you guys, if you're not, uh, busy Veterans Day, to go to the high school at nine. They will be having their Veterans Day celebration from nine to nine thirty at the Ball of Central High School. That's open to the public if anyone would like to attend that. Um, I have a few. I don't thank any of them. Trying to look, I don't see any of them here. We have a few. I want to say thank you to all of the veterans, uh, and everyone that served our country so that we can have the freedoms that we do have. But I do want to recognize the, uh, employees that we have here at the City of Bolivar, they're veterans. So, they're not here, but I'm just gonna, uh, say their name. Mr. Matthew Graber, Mr. Chris Wickelson, Mr. Adam Rogers, Mr. Jim Esther, Mr. Jimmy Rucker, Mr. Benny Marino, and Mr. Winston Harris. So, I say thank you to all of them for serving. Um, and like I said, thank you to all the veterans and everyone that, well, Chris just came in. I always say, why I'm not gonna mess with him. So, uh, Mr. Wickelson here, we just, uh, I just called your names. Come on down, Mr. Wickelson. We just have something to say thank you on behalf of the ci- City of Bolivar, and thank you for what you've done and, uh, your service to our country. So, um, what, what branch did you serve?
Army.
Army. Again, thank you, and this is just something to say that we appreciate you.
I couldn't wait till I get around. I couldn't even get changed. I'm gonna like it.
Also, next, uh, closing on Thanksgiving. We'll be close to celebrate Thanksgiving on November 25th and 26th. I encourage you to spend that time enjoying your family, being thankful for what God has given us. I have a thank you card here. City of Bolivar Administration and City Council, thank you for your kind expression of sympathy at a time when it was greatly appreciated. This is from Mr. Lynn Chief Price and his wife, Ms. Anita Price. Uh, so, we still be in prayer for them and the loss of their son. Also, I want to invite all of our, uh, city council members out. December 1st, at nine AM, we'll be having our annual Christmas party. Uh, December 1st, nine AM, we have Christmas party, employees. Um, we'll be giving out our, uh, giving out their longevity checks for the employees. So, if y'all are not busy and able to come, um, they'll be happy to see you come out. Um, we had a very successful barbecue, uh, competition last, it's two or three weeks ago. And Ms. Ray, did you want to read them numbers? Or you want, um, I would turn it over to Ms. Ray to talk about the barbecue festival.
Okay, yeah. We had a, a competition barbecue contest here, and I want to thank the city and, um, Devco and Main Street for all the work. Um, city, you guys did a great job. We got lots of, lots of kudos from the teams for all of the, um, infrastructure that was available to them. We also did a survey to, um, ask our pro teams, and those are the guys that travel from out of town. We, we had twenty-seven teams in all that participated. Uh, we had about thirty judges that came to town to do that. Uh, estimates are that there were about three thousand people downtown during the event. Uh, but we did do a survey for our pro teams that traveled out of town and asked them to give us some feedback on how far they traveled, how many people came with them, if they used our hotels, uh, if they spent money on fuel in restaurants, uh, or any of our other businesses. And that was, uh, positive responses from all of them. So, we did make use of hotel rooms, uh, restaurants, uh, shopping, and, uh, and fuel. And we got an estimate back that they spent almost seventeen thousand dollars while they were in town during that weekend. Again, we did not, um, survey the backyard teams, which were mostly local people, or any of our judges, because most of them were just here for one day. But that's, that's a pretty good number for seventeen teams coming into town to spend almost seventeen thousand dollars. So, uh, just again, want to thank the city and Devco and Main Street and, and all of our other sponsors, all of our volunteers, and, um, the guys from the city that work so hard. I appreciate all the help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Uh, that's all on my report. Starting off, I stand and committed reports. Under the Lecture Department, BEA Board met October 25th. Uh, following action was taken. Alexander Thomas and Arnold presented the fiscal twenty twenty-one audit. No findings in the audit, and the board accepted the audit for the twenty twenty-one, uh, fiscal year audit. Uh, I'll skip that part. Tony's here. I'll let him go in depth on, uh, broadband. Also approved to assist the City of Bolivar and Devco with the installation of EV charge in downtown. So, that's all on the, uh, BEA report, and we'll hear more from Tony later on in the, uh, meeting. Next, utility is Cliff Henson.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. The Utility Board didn't meet on the third. This month, we had some, uh, some of the members going to a conference there in Gatlinburg to get their continuing education for their municipal board training. So, we canceled that meeting until December the first. So, we'll meet again then. Um, pre-pilot season is still up and going. We'll, we'll carry that through the end of November. So, still, if there's people out there that needs their pilot lit, just give our office a call, six five eight five eight nine four, and we'll get to you as soon as possible. We're a little busy right now. Just be patient with us. Natural gas prices are still rising. I kinda told y'all that last month. Be prepared. Uh, they're gonna get higher. We've got about a forty-five percent increase from the summer rates. So, that's gonna continue to go, what they're saying, our markets are telling us, is gonna probably go up to about a hundred and fifty percent. So, uh, be prepared for that. Everything else is routine.
Thank you, Ms. Cliff. You have, uh, Chief Price's report. He was off today. Uh, Chief Jones, police.
Good evening. My report is as follows. Call to service we had was five hundred and eighty-nine. We had a hundred twenty-nine citations that were issued. There was eighteen accidents. Two of them were injury, sixteen property damages, thirty arrests, four of those arrests were juveniles, twenty was adults. We did three DUI, three DUI saturations. We also did trunk and treat for the kids Sunday. We used the Methodist church lot. I think we had two or three patrol cars out there. And, uh, we had the motorcade from Holland coming, and we did a hundred and ninety-two hours of training for the month.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, parks. Listen, Stat. They changed size tonight. Y'all sitting over there.
Trying to slip in. Mayor and Council, uh, we started the foundation work on the mobile building at San Beach. Also, we've had our pre-construction meeting with Graves Construction Company on the playground at San Beach. Equipment has been ordered, uh, should be in our first of the year, and we plan on starting when the weather breaks, probably March. Close my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stat. Next, recreation. Mr. Ford.
Good evening to everyone. All right, City of Bolivar Recreation Department reports on the following. Our five through thirteen-year-old soccer league ended la- in the last month, and the season was a success. We're looking forward to next year. Adult volleyball league registration has ended, and the first game, we actually had two games on this past Friday. So, uh, that season is in effect now. The youth, six through ten-year-old basketball league registration has started and will continue through December the third. Our adult basketball registration will begin on the fifteenth of this month. And also, we continue our adult exercise class, which meets on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next, streets and sanitation. Mr. Vannen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've been working on the downtown. Let me start over again. We've been working on downtown Christmas decorations, and we changed out the pedestrian crossing lights and push buttons downtown at Jackson and Main and Main and Market. And, uh, we picked up a whole lot of stuff during the bucket month, bucky item, buck.
That's over. That'll start back in January with buck items. So, please, don't, citizens, don't put anything else out to first of the year. Thank you, Mr. Vannen. Uh, you have the library report. I'll be praying, Ms. Becky. She was, uh, a little ill earlier today, so be praying that she's feeling better. Compliance is on it. Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you guys. I feel like a bird out of prison. It's the first time I've been with you in a while. I hadn't had a cast or a harness, so they set me free. Uh, you have my report. Building consultations, six. Building permits written, two. Building inspections, three. Uh, plumbing inspections, three. Mechanical inspections, three. Courtesy notices issued, twenty. And so, it'll be my turn again to start issuing courtesy notices if you're setting bulky items out. Just kinda remind you again. So, you know, make my job easy. Don't put it out there, okay?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Watkins. Under Main Street and Devco, I want to announce the Christmas parade to be December 4th. Encourage everyone to go out and participate. This year's theme is a family Christmas. You can find those applications on our city's Facebook page and website. If you would like to, uh, enter into this year's Christmas parade, December 4th, six PM. We're back on a Saturday this year. So, encourage everyone to come out and attend, uh, Christmas parade. That's all under, uh, Main Street, Devco. Moving on to old business. CareMed, West Tennessee Ambulance Service update. I tell, I guess, last, well, I don't know if it was last month, two or three weeks ago, we left, uh, with the board to get the decision to see what the county would be doing for returning EMS services. I did attend the county commission meeting. Uh, from the feel of that, that I got from the commission, they're not interested in doing any type of, uh, contract or any type of agreement with the, uh, with, with West Tennessee Healthcare or any other entity for that matter. They're gonna continue, uh, moving forward with, uh, the county EMS services. Um, so, after that, we did speak, uh, with Mayor Sane about some different options that he proposed to West Tennessee Healthcare. Um, but we left with the meeting that basically we will wait to see what happens with the county and give West Tennessee Healthcare the option to make a proposal for us to do services, well, for them to do services in our, uh, city limits. So, uh, Mr. Ross, I spoke with him this morning. You can come on down, Mr. Ross. Uh, spoke with him this morning. He, uh, he missed it, but he sent the proposal, I think, Friday sometime. But I, I say he missed, I missed it. Um, but I did, we did get that today. Um, and I forward that to y'all. But, uh, Mr. Ross does have a proposal here from West Tennessee Healthcare, so I'll give him the floor now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as you mentioned, just to reiterate, uh, we did meet with Mayor Sane. Uh, I had several of my team, uh, who came to Bolivar and met. And, uh, his proposal was to allow Medical Center EMS to be housed in the county's, uh, current EMS station. We would put one unit there, and it would be, uh, twenty-four seven. We would be able to be housed there for free. And we would take care of all of Bolivar General's transports, and then we would fall into, when not busy, we'd fall into the rotation, uh, with his EMS service for the city of Bolivar. Having heard you loud and clear, very clear, the last time I was here, I did put together a proposal, and I have a summary page that's in a packet that I have provided to you. Uh, essentially what we're saying, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And also tonight, I would, uh, be remiss if I did not introduce, uh, Ms. Joyce Knowles. Ms. Joyce Knowles is our executive director for all of our five counties that we currently have EMS services. But tonight, in the summary proposal, we are, uh, once again saying that we would provide one, uh, ALS unit twenty-four seven three sixty-five. We would provide an additional unit for at least twelve hours a day, and that is on day one, uh, starting January the first. We would increase, uh, the number of units needed to meet the demand, uh, here, and would take care of the city of Bolivar. We also have the opportunity to bring in our non-emergency transport vans that do, uh, doctor's offices and other types of transports to help with, uh, the internal city volume. Uh, I will be honest with you. We do not have good data on, uh, the amount of runs and the volume here. But absolutely, starting January one, we could start sooner if that was the demand of the council. But, uh, an orderly development for us would be on January one. Uh, one twenty-four seven three sixty-five, one twelve-hour unit. We would adjust that twelve-hour unit accordingly. And then, as the demand continued to rise, we would, uh, add units to that. We are privileged in, in that we have several units in contiguous counties, too. Hardeman County, and we would also, with the, uh, as the need would arise, we would always work to keep a ALS unit, uh, here in the city. So, we would, yes, pull from our other resources, whether it be Madison, Chester, uh, and other areas, to make sure that you had an ALS unit present here in the city, uh, at all times. I'll be glad. There's a lot of details, uh, to be worked out. We would, uh, like the opportunity to do a contract and work that contract with you all's legal counsel and our legal counsel, and work through the other, uh, legalese and legal loves that, uh, you would want in a contract.
All right, uh, questions for Mr. Ross?
Mr. Ross, we, as we said before, we appreciate you, West Tennessee Healthcare and the hospital and the service that's been provided. You made a statement last week when asked about dual dispatch, uh, having two services in one county. Um, how do you feel about that now? I mean, you said it could be a hot.
I still, I still stand that having one service to cover the county is best. And it takes out a lot of the different nuances and so forth that you potentially could have. But recognizing you all's need and request, uh, we're willing to step up and try our very, very best to meet that need, and also take care of the, uh, the patients that we have at Bolivar General Hospital as well.
What happens if, I've asked the competition the same question. What happens if we have an emergency or that more than one ambulance required for the scene? How does that work?
EMS, EMS folks, uh, their heart and their passion is to take care of the need and work out the details later. And so, we would work to have a mutual aid agreement with the county and a reciprocating agreement where we would help cover them if the need arose. But it's the same mutual agreement that, uh, we would do with any other county. If it's a major disaster, we're calling all hands on deck. We would ask Fayette County if they were, uh, available to do that. That's part of our emergency response plan, disaster planning, emergency preparedness planning. But, uh, we work to take care of, uh, the needs of this community and the other communities by doing that within our own service, ambulances that we have. But we would definitely want and would work, uh, in a cohesive fashion with the county to help cross cover.
If I could do one more question.
Yes, sir.
How, and you may not can answer this, may not want to. How does it differ from, how does our contract proposal differ from the county? I know we were offering a free building as a county, but we're going in to offer you a building. Here, we've got to remodel. Is that right?
Yes. You're talking about what we house them?
Yeah.
Yeah, annexed building.
So, how was the, what's the difference in the coverage for Bolivar?
Essentially the same. Essentially the same.
You, you're saying what's the difference in the proposal with the county?
Right.
The proposal with the county was offering one ambulance and alternating calls. With what we're doing, it would be two, and they would do all of our calls.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the building.
Well, there was two parks to it.
Okay.
You got, you got much better.
And then, of course, building. I think county mayor offered the, the county EMS building. Um, and we just offered doing the, and it's fixing, remodeling, annexed building. I'll say that, um, having West, for, for me, I'll, to CareMed, I've said it to them. They've been great in this process. Uh, our county EMS, they've been good. I've, they, I feel they've, oh, they have been overworked, and, um, it's, it's challenging time. Uh, for us, West Tennessee Healthcare means a lot because they have our hospital here. Um, it's a very sticky situation. If we put, like I've been saying, if we put ten ambulances in here, we're gonna need eleven. It's just, but, you know, when we look at it, if the city and the reason I brought this to the board, I guess, last month, and when we first started this conversation, is what we could do to help assist and cover that need. Uh, and CareMed stepped up and offered a proposal to do that, uh, to help do that. Uh, and West Tennessee Healthcare has did the same thing. I don't vote in this, but I, I don't want to hide my opinion and where I stand, 'cause I've talked to a lot of the people at our county EMS. I've talked to CareMed as well as Mr. Ross. But they have a hospital here, and I want to support them and do what they, we can to help make sure that hospital is here. And I want to do what we can to make sure there's ambulances available if we can do that. Like I said, if it's ten, we're gonna need eleven. But we done everything. I want to be able to sleep at night saying I did everything I could to make sure we had coverage in our community. And if they're offering this, and it's no cost to the citizens, um, I, I would hope you guys would support doing this. And if it doesn't work, we can come back to the drawing board and do something else. But that's just where I stand. I just wanted everybody to know that.
One last comment, and, and that is, again, I want to make it clear, uh, we want to be in a cohesive environment, serving your citizens. And we will make every effort to, to do that, working cohesively with the county, uh, in any of other of your public service, uh, groups that you have, fire, police, and all. But that's, that's what we do, and that's what we want to do. One quick story. I was told tonight, as on the way here, that, uh, today, in McNary County, we had five ambulances down there, and we only stationed them with three. And so, you know, that, that's kinda how we, how we do. And also, we've had an opportunity, we've had nine, is that correct, in McNary County at one time, dealing with the services. And again, it's, their contract is just three. So, it's that type of, uh, movement and, and, uh, use of services that we try to coordinate and make happen. Thank you all.
Any questions, anything from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I, I just noticed we've got some people in EMS here, and I just want to thank them for their service. They've been, they've been hit pretty hard, as every emergency service has in every community. I personally had an opportunity to be transported to Jackson Madison County General Hospital by this group back here, and I couldn't have been treated any better, any faster, service courteous. Uh, and I just want us to go on record of thanking them for the service they provided. And I hope that we're not sending a message that we haven't appreciated them, 'cause, you know, somebody said that we gotta look out for citizens of Bolivar, but we do. We were elected by the citizens, but we gotta look out for the best interest of the county. And we have a group of employees back there that are excellent employees. And I just appreciate the things that goes on for this community. And I'm sure the rest of the people do, too. I would, I would wish, I would hope that we would take that into consideration. I'm not talking against West Tennessee Healthcare. I'm not talking against, uh, CareMed. I'm not talking about against anybody. I'm just saying, we have a service that works. We need to take that into consideration.
Mr. McKinnon, you want?
Well, I, uh, I have to concur with Mr. Crawford there, that, uh, I commend the, uh, Hardeman County ambulance service for job well done, that they've been doing so well for the Hardeman County. But, in the same token, uh, I was elected here in Bolivar, and, uh, when citizens start calling me, addressing, and it's not the fault of the Hardeman County Ambulance Department. Let me first say that. They don't have anything to do with it. They just work with the ambulance department. Uh, but, uh, when they start calling me, and I'm talking about the citizens, East Bolivar at least, talking about where is the ambulance, or took this length of time for the ambulance to get here. One time, I was over there at the, when they had the shooting over there at the, uh, East Ridge, yeah, East Ridge apartment, I noticed it was a Chester County ambulance department. Ah, Chester County, what they doing over here, you know? But, you know, we ain't got nobody, you know? They have to call for other counties, you know? That's what they call the metra, metra aid. Uh, so, I think that, uh, we need to look out for the citizens of Bolivar. This is what they call city council, 'cause we represent the city of Bolivar, Tennessee. And with that being said, uh, I think we need an ambulance service here. We need ambulance service where, you know, when we call, you know, they are there. Uh, not looking for one, not waiting on one, you know? They there. And, uh, with that being said, uh, I make a motion that we enter into a contract with, uh, West Tennessee Healthcare. Don't have nothing against Care, Care, Caremark. I don't have anything against them. I don't know them. Don't, we really don't know West Tennessee, other than the hospital. Uh, but I just make a motion that we, uh, uh, reach an agreement with the, uh, West Tennessee Caremark to provide ambulance service for Bolivar, city of Bolivar.
All right. Got a motion to enter agreement with Tennessee Healthcare. Is there any questions or any more discussion on it?
I'd like to say that, uh, you know, like, I, I'm proud of the ambulance call. I had to come pick me up out on Murcrie Barre Drive years ago. They done a good job. But then, if we have, say, four or five different accident at one time, or even like, uh, coming to work, coming here after work, you know, wherever, and they had a concert- to work, coming here after work, you know, wherever, and they had a concert somewhere and had about fifteen or twenty young people got hurt, and got, some of them got killed, you know? And, uh, they do excellent job 'cause they know what they doing, and I'm a, I'm safety man in my job, and I do stuff like that at work, we had, actually had three people that even died there, you know, on, at, at work, and, uh, they do excellent work, they right there quick as they can, but they can't be at two places at one time, so I'm saying, if you had a five, you putting out, if you had twenty people, they could put it out quicker than three, uh, quicker than five. So no slack toward them, I wouldn't want them to leave, I want them to quit, I would like to keep them there, I'd like to award them something, but I also, I don't think we could get too much help, that's the way I'm looking at it. So I would second the motion on Larry toward that, West Tennessee Healthcare, because I think more help the better, and it won't be no slack toward nobody, I wouldn't wanna see any slack toward those fellows back there, 'cause we need them, night and day, twenty-four hours a day. But more help is gonna be, like police officer, we could have more police officers, I mean, I wouldn't kick that at off, if we had three or four more, you know? And, uh, they do more and just drink coffee, 'cause some come down, I'ma call them, you know, and they gonna be there, you know, so the more, the better, the way I'm looking at it, and, and with the West Tennessee Healthcare, which they already got a Bolivar Hospital, and is one of the few that stayed after Brownville and Fayette, uh, Fayette County and McNary, something that almost shut down, but I was stayed, so I'm glad they stayed with us, and, uh, it is a good stop before you get to Memphis or Jackson or whatever to take care of you, 'cause I had to go through it myself. So I would second the motion on that, West Tennessee Healthcare.
I have a motion on the second that you-
Yeah, let me, let me, let me say this, 'cause, uh, when you talk about commending people for doing outstanding job, I just thought about it, and I definitely should've remembered this, was the accident that I had there, and I haven't, uh, told them that I appreciate it, at least face to face anyway, uh, the accident that I had there in tune, as a police officer, Hardeman County ambulance service was there, and they done outstanding doc, outstanding job, and I have to say by the grace of God and them with their help, uh, you know, I'm here today. So, and I do wanna say thank, thank you for that too. Thank you for your service on that.
Mayor, I, I'll say, I, I hate that it ever got construed as being a slight at our ambulance service.
Right, right.
And I hope that you, I hope that you're meeting with, with them, uh, you were able to help them to understand this is not-
No.
-a slight at you guys.
True.
Uh, our full, our full effort is to help citizens of Bolivar-
Yes.
-and in turn, I believe that we're helping the citizens of Hardeman County, because we're opening up opportunity for your ambulance service to take care of other business throughout the county. So, uh, I do believe that we're doing right by both parties there. Uh, so I got, I got friends on that, that service right there, so I, I in no way wanna slight you guys, but-
Right, right.
-I do feel like the best thing to do is to move forward with West Tennessee Healthcare.
I concur with you on that.
I have a motion on the second, all in favor, seventy-five percent, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Want to oppose, motion care. So, uh, what we'll do moving forward, uh, I guess I could, Mr. Ross, the plans to go to the, uh, hospital, start, we'll work with Abby and our, their attorneys on legal stuff, but they did plan to go to the hospital until we finish the remodel, um, they're gonna work with Ms. Ruby on how they're gonna have sleeping quarters and stuff there, uh, so I guess I'll ask if you guys would give me approval to hire, uh, engineering company to the work, the remodel for that building, um, down there, to get the plans, we'll need to make sure electrical and, uh, plumbing and all of that stuff is up to par, so, um, and all the expenses occurred by this will be coming from our COVID relief funds, so-
That was, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah, it, none, it would, none of it be general fund, it be COVID relief funds, but if I, if you guys would give me authority to hire, uh, engineering company to move forward that, to get those plans, uh, submitted and start work on that.
Second.
Motion and second by Mr. Woods, if you would call the role, Ms. Clark, it's been a month.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Golding?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Shalow?
Yes.
Mr. McPhee?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Motion care, thank y'all, um-
Can he, will you speak?
That's all on, uh, that, uh, Mr., CareMed, thank y'all so much, uh, y'all been great in this whole process, uh, if y'all, if I can do anything to help y'all, let me, let me know.
Director?
Yes, sir. Get to know y'all, good people, hey, y'all gotta do what's best for y'all, and I understand that, and we're glad we got to come get to know y'all and maybe help, maybe we caused some good things to happen, you know, sometimes, maybe we just kinda was the cause of good things, right?
You did.
We may not end up with a business, but we still caused, we helped you out, so if we can ever help y'all, let us know.
We thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, David, I appreciate you guys, and, uh, we all need to let us know, and-
All right.
All right, next, uh, new business, uh, Mr. Tony Kirk, we've been waiting for this a long, long time. I think he just dodged us until he had some good news, I think that's what he was doing.
I could have, I, I wanna apologize to the mayor and city council for standing up, y'all up last meeting, um, things were changing and things were happening, I needed to go to my board before I brought it to y'all, so I apologize for that, hope you didn't put you in a bind, mayor, but-
Oh, I understand completely.
Some things, that thing happens sometimes. Before I go into what you're wanting here, I just wanna let you update on some things BEA's doing right now. First off, we're working with Devco and the city to bring two EV chargers downtown, it's through a grant with TVA in the state of Tennessee, they're gonna cover eighty percent of the total cost. That grant should be finalized, and we should know something in a couple of weeks, so that's good news for the downtown area. We're also fixing break ground on the solar farm out on Mecklenburg, uh, which will in turn help us save some on our power costs, it'll be serve up to five hundred homes through solar power in the county, uh, which helps us cut power costs, and in turn, we can keep from going up in rates, and we invest that money back into our system. Well, for the big news, um, I've been CEO for two years now, and it's been over my desk more than once. I thought I'd, COVID was bad enough, and then broadband kept coming up, we thought we had a company two years ago that would say they'd do the system, and then all of a sudden COVID hit, and they backed off and left us, and we didn't hear anything else from them. We had several proposals from other companies, one company wants to do it, but one, they want us to be in the red twenty years later, about six million dollars, and they were gonna make about eight million, and we said, no, that doesn't work, um, it's not a cheap fixed anything, um, I, we got a call from Southwest Electric about two months ago, they are working with Aeneas right now and providing service to their service area, and ask us with all the grant money that was out there, but we reconsidered. And we did, we've met with them more than once, we've met with two or three other companies, and their company, Aeneas, through Stuart C. Erby, who's one of our suppliers already, had the best proposal, and this is how it works. We'll have to borrow about twenty-eight million dollars. Um, it's not cheap, um, the startup cost, what we're hoping to do is borrow eight to ten upfront to get going, and then do grants, hopefully fund the rest of it. My board gave us authority to do our high-level design, which is costing BEA quite a bit of money, but we decided to go ahead. We wanna make sure that there's no red flags that show up that keeps us from being successful. I don't want this to be a burden on my electric rate pairs, you know, they've already paid for a system that's hanging, that's providing power, that's fine, we've hung some fiber already that's serving our purpose, but, you know, twenty-eight millions is a lot of, lot of dollars to ask, uh, people to pay for, you know, we're not gonna service, and we realize that, and that was one of the hardest things we had to, to realize, that we're not gonna service every home we go by. With electric system, we're gonna catch everybody that goes by, 'cause everybody's gotta have lights. Well, not, everybody has to have internet. We service seven customers per mile a line, some places we get in a rule, we're down to one or two customers per mile, so it gets expensive. So, in saying that, we're gonna do this high-level design, we're gonna try to get any and all grants possible, and then we're gonna take the burden of starting with initial investment of borrowing eight to ten million dollars to get it started. And it works this way, BEA will be responsible for all the fiber in the air, on our poles, drops to the home. Aeneas will be the internet service provider, who will, will have a direct number for them when customer call on broadband, we'll send it to Aeneas, they'll do all the in-home installs, they own all the electronics, which took a big burden off us, because I've got plenty of guys that knows what electric switch is and how we operate that, but when you get the fiber, that's a whole new game when we're doing broadband. This way, we don't have to hire extra employees, build extra buildings, reduce some of the costs for us, and not having to do the customer service area, not having to do all the electronic work. So we're also through this high-level design, we're gonna try to see if we can utilize some of the fiber we've already got in the air. We've got some extra space on some fiber, and it's kinda complicated when you start explaining, but you split a fiber into thirty-two other fibers to serve thirty-two homes on one fiber, so we've got plenty of space and areas that we're gonna try to reduce cost in. In saying that, in all this, we're gonna step forward with faith on this endeavor and try to bring broadband service to the, our service area in Hardeman County, including Bolivar. Um, how soon we start depends on when we get the money. We hope we can start the second quarter of next year. Um, supposedly, with our preliminary design, is a three-year build-out, so it takes thirty-six months to build it all out, we'll have contractors in here, and we'll be doing pulling some of the fiber too. Um, I've sent the mayor a letter, uh, the mayor and I have just talked more than once than-
Couple of times.
Couple of times, had me about broadband, and, but we, we realized as a service provider in Hardeman County, that for our county to grow, for our economy to grow economically, and for us to get some effect from this Blue Oval factory, somebody had to bring broadband to Hardeman County, and we're set up to do it as easy as anybody. It'd rather be a hometown guy doing it than trying to get somebody outside of Bolivar and Hardeman County to do it. We feel like we can do it better, and at the cheaper rates than other people can. So, in that saying, I'm asking for your support. Um, I know I sent the mayor a letter that says, uh, letter of supports, I've already talked to Representative Shaw, Senator Wally, uh, they tried to kinda twist my arm when I first took office to get broadband, so I told them I was twisting their arm back to get funding, so anything that the city council can do, uh, whether it's being, if you got any COVID extra funding, the more people we can park, the more people that we can help find this thing, the better off we are in grants. So if you had extra American recovery money that you could give to this project, that would be great, if not, it's still gonna be worked on, but letter of support that we can file with our grant would be, would be great. I can't tell you what's part of the county we're gonna start in yet, that's the first question everybody has.
That's the hottest question, that.
That's the hottest question, when we told our employees what was fixing to happen, all the line was said, well, I'll hang it to my house if you'll get me go first, but, you know? Um, we're working on that, our, our high-level design should take thirty to forty-five days, we got the contract back today, so that's starting this week, so, um, that's my update on broadband, um, I'm hoping there's no red flags that come up and say you can't do it, because we're not in it to make a big profit, we're in it to cover our debt service and our operational cost, and that's it. Aeneas will have three different packages right now that they offer, two hundred fifty megabytes at fifty-nine ninety-nine, five hundred at seventy-nine, and a gig at ninety-nine. So that's a service that we'll provide. Just to update you on a little bit else, we are already providing that service to some businesses in town through Aeneas, we're, we're providing high-speed internet for them through our fiber that we've already got strong. So any questions that I can answer or?
Well, I'll say, uh, Tony took, took over, I guess, right before COVID, and we talked right before then about-
We did.
-things he was wanting to do, and just, and COVID happened, it sort of canceled all his plans, and his first year-
It changed everything.
Yeah, his first year as director was handling stuff with COVID.
Yeah.
But I'd say, I've said, I've said it privately, and I've tried to say it publicly every time I get a chance, Tony has been great, uh, working with, I mean, I, he hadn't, I hope he don't starve, but every time I've called him, he's either said yes or figured out a way to get somebody else to make it work for me, so I appreciate it, Tony, it's been great work.
Well, it's been, it's been, uh, it's been great to work with the cities, we cooperate boldly, it's been great, I think it shows that we're wanting our community to grow and our city to prosper, and that's the only way we can do it, and I appreciate you, mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, city council.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have, I'm sorry, somebody was clapping? Oh, okay. I thought I heard somebody clapping, so, uh, let me ask you this.
All right.
Uh, uh, in regards to cable, I, you know, cable, you know, TV cable?
TV.
Uh, I noted Bolivar Electric Department at one time-
At one time we talked about it.
At one time they was talking about doing it, so I would just-
That's a whole different ballgame.
Let me help you, Larry.
We don't wanna talk about it.
Get you some internet, you can get everything on cable TV.
Now, I got, and I got, I got respect them, but I wanna get Bolivar Electric Department.
I, I'll work with him on how he can download the stream.
I wanna work with the whole peoples, I wanna work with the whole people, you know? But I've called Mr. Tony before several times, and, uh, he always been good to me, and that's before you made CEO, so I haven't called you since then, but, you know, you done good then, I know you gonna do, you're doing good now.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, David, Tony, Mr. Kirk, thank you, sir.
All right.
Oh, okay, I thought I heard that, all right.
All right, we have an ordinance here to pass, uh, this is an ordinance, uh, to, uh, make city of Bolivar, Tennessee as a broadband-rated community, this is gonna help, uh, when it's time for him to start applying for grant funding, and this basically is just showing that we support, uh, we support BEA's, uh, efforts in broadband funding, so is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty?
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Ray, the second, Mr. La. Uh, all right, is there, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion care. We have anybody on community development? No? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, man.
Motion, Mr. Kenny? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm on-